Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:02 PM.
Okay. All right, the October 11th, 2022, regular meeting of the Manner Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wade, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bryner.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Jessling.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, and with all the great just cause. 11th, 2022, regular meeting of the Manner Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received further review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call to Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request if needed additional information. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 1026 in Manner and Channel 1025 in Manner-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel Cardinal TV, Manner Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. The board welcomes public participation during our meeting. The first opportunity to speak is on agenda items only, and then there is a second opportunity to speak on any topic later in the meeting. Each person may only speak once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers need to announce their name, address, and where their children attend school if applicable. The purpose of hearing of the public is for community members to address the board. We must insist you direct your comments to the board and not to other audience members. It is equally important that everyone has a chance to speak uninterrupted, so please do not call out or interrupt when someone else has the floor. While we may not all agree on various topics, let's demonstrate how to be respectful to one another during our school board meetings. As the board president, it is my job to enforce the rules of the meeting so that the board can conduct its business. We kindly ask everyone to respect the expectations of this evening's meeting. The hearing of the public portion of our meetings is information gathering for the board and administration so we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation we do not make a statement, please know this is in no way demonstrates a lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. Thank you. District highlights and recommendations. Mr. Heath.
Good evening, you're Adam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade. At this time, I would like to recognize our PTA and PTSA Presidents. We all know the importance of parent involvement in our schools. For many years, the PTA has given endless hours of service to our students, staff, and community, and we are very thankful to them for their many projects and their tireless dedication. So this evening, I would like to call up the following board or PTA Presidents. Bellflower Elementary, Bridget Sopko. Fairfax Elementary, Kelly Jankowski. Hopkins Elementary, Megan Shoning. Lake Elementary, Lisa Savoka. Orchard Hollow Elementary, Susan Bean. Ridge Elementary, Gabriel Zalinka. Sterling Morton Elementary, Aaron Phelps. Memorial Middle School, Jen Williams. Shore Middle School, John Morris. Manner High School, April Helsberger. And our Lake County Council President is Kristen Frederick. Yeah, make sure you stand there. We want one big picture here before we're done. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for all of your service to our community, and we hope you have a great 2022-23 school year. Thanks you again.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes. We've got a special board meeting from September 13th, 2022, regular board meeting September 13th, 2022, special board meeting September 21st, and a special board meeting on September 28th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Wade, before we begin tonight, I would like to make one adjustment to the agenda. I would like to pull Item 7, Letter A, Number 5, from the agenda this evening. This is the contract with Apogee Leadership Group, who has served as our consultant for the District DEI Committee the previous two years. We would like to have additional conversation with the board before moving forward with the contract. As we have had conversations about our DEI work here for this school year, I would like to take the approach of really digging into the data a little bit more, really identifying what our needs are as a district, and then putting a plan together with a mission, vision, and action steps that will best address those particular needs that we have from our DEI Committee standpoint. So before we approve any contract, we would like to continue those conversations, not only internally with our DEI group but with the board as well, later on in a board work session.
So moved.
Second.
No votes.
We don't need a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. All right, we will move on to hearing of the public on agenda items only. Saying that, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report and Recommendations, Mr. Heath.
Madam President, Members of the Board, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 6A1 through 6A3.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Wade, I have the following Board of Education policies on the agenda for a first reading. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary. Madam President, Members of the Board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C5, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Board of Education Report and Recommendations.
Members of the Board, Madam President, Members of the Board, I'll do this one. I'll help out.
Sir, was that me?
It is recommended that the board member in service attendance at the 2022 OSBA Capital Conference and Trade Show be approved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, Members of the Boards, recommended the approval of the resolution authorizing the sale of used surplus equipment for public auction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam President, Members of the Boards, recommended the approval of the Employee Preferred Corporation Employee Severance Plan Agreement.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I would just note to the Board and the community, this is an agreement for the Board to enter into a severance agreement with employees that would go into effect at the end of the calendar year. We are projecting savings of upwards to $4 million or as little as just over $1.5 million, depending upon the number of staff members who would take part in the severance. We will have the ability to evaluate it once people have deemed they will participate to make sure that it benefits the district. If there's no savings to the district, we will not move forward with said severance package. So this is a strategy to help reduce costs earlier than expected, and we'll have savings into the future. So happy to answer any questions.
Completely voluntary, correct?
Completely voluntary, correct, yes.
And what's the deadline for staff who might be interested?
First day would be October 24th for us to notify. We'll start notifying people tomorrow if they qualify, and they will have from the 24th with the first informational meeting through December 9th to put in their acceptance of the package and retiring at the end of June 30th of 2023.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
It is recommended that the agreement between Crossroads Health and Manner Exempt Village School District be approved.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Just wanted to touch base, because I know we got some emails, and I heard a little bit from the community, that what's written in there is $700,000 for the contract, but that's if we utilize all of that $700,000. Like last year, it was the same contract for $700,000, but it was around 420?
Yeah, just under, just low 400s, I think, 407.
Okay.
Approximately, yeah.
So we will only pay what we actually use?
Yeah, so it's based on the-
For budgeting purposes.
Correct, yeah, Ms. Payne, it's based on the staffing that we have in our buildings to support our students.
Okay. And I know you provided us with some additional stats on if we were to having, have to hire, it would be over like a million and two, 1.2 or something like that?
Yeah, correct. We already think we paid, yeah, just about five. We've been averaging around $500,000 the last three years, and if we were to staff those people ourselves, we would pay over double that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, just for some clarification.
No good questions.
Anything else?
You know, just because there were a lot of questions, I just wanted to discuss how important Crossroads is to our district. It does provide clinical services in all grade levels, which includes evaluation and therapy across the general population, and for all of our students with identified disabilities that receive this support. So that would include our students with emotional disturbances. Some of these students have these services prescribed in their IEPs. Some of the services are reimbursed through Medicaid, so we do have a potential to get reimbursed if the student is Medicaid eligible. Our administration has made it very clear to us that the social-emotional state of our students is below what we expect for our students right now. Crossroads is a key component to our students' success. You know, employers are rating soft skills. Your ability to work in groups, to communicate effectively, to self-regulate your emotions is the most important skill to employment success. It's, it's, I recently read a study, and it was like the top seven skills above any other thing, even over the actual work skill, was how you got along with people and were able to self-regulate your emotions. The Crossroads provides a community continuum with a flexibility of home visits and parental involvement. In addition, as mental health professionals, they can serve as a part of our threat assessment team, and I know we talked a lot about how important threat assessment teams are to our school safety. So, you know, I really urge us, as we think about this vote, to not limit the contract but support our commitment to mental health supports, because it does support how our students focus in the classroom to improve learning. It involves our families, it develops employability skills, and it improves safety in the buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook.
Anything else?
And I think some of the questions that we were receiving was, you know, are parents involved in it, and they are, correct? Like, from everything you sent, they're involved in-
From the beginning, yeah, they have to be approved-
Okay.
-per the contract, that they had to have parental approval from the very beginning before the service can start.
Perfect.
Mr. Wade did a great job of really reading through that contract this year. We actually had a couple of meetings with Crossroads to get some of the language cleaned up that maybe wasn't exactly the way we would have liked it in years past, and including some of that work around the parental pieces to the puzzle. But that's, that's something that they've always done, is gotten that parental consent first.
And in addition to consent, on a quarterly basis, students that are, that have it as a part of their IEP receive progress reports. So the student, you know, and the parent involvement, it, it's very clear.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Mr. Heath removed Item 5, so that concludes this section of the agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to Legislative Report, Mr. Tuttle.
So you may or may not recall from last month's report, I'll read the paragraph again within. Leaders in the House, Senate, and the House canceled their if-needed session dates in September. Members of the General Assembly will reconvene on November 15th with committee hearings. So hence, there's no report this month because they didn't meet last month. So I know everyone is disappointed I'm not doing a report, but-
See one, okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on to Student Achievement Report, Mrs. Cook.
Okay, I won't disappoint. During the week of September 19th, all of our high school students and students in Grade 7 participated in the Allison Rose Foundation presentations to learn about allergies and increase awareness. Not only did our students participate in this potentially life-saving presentation, but our teaching staff all received a similar presentation at their monthly meeting, and the entire district staff will be trained this year as well. The district also hosted an Allison Rose Foundation Family Night on September 22nd for all community members. Manner High School is extremely proud of our 13 students who qualified as National Merit semifinalists or commended students for the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. Five of our Manner High School students have been selected as National Merit semifinalists. So National Merit semifinalists would be, represent less than 1% of US high school seniors, and they include the highest scores in the state, and having five within Manner High School is a very big deal. Those students include Matthew Dawson, Ethan Lee, Manav Malik, Ziad Mansour, and Ashani Zimmerman. Eight students were named as commended students. Now, the commended students represent the top 50,000 students that entered the competition, and that would be the top 3% to 4% who participated nationally. Those students are Daniel Casey, Gianna Cesari, Kayden Coleman, Andrew Freeman, Braden Lowry, Emily Meckler, Amelia Wong, and Bennett Wong. To qualify for this competition, they're taking, these students took the 2021 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and this was the initial, initial screen of program entrance. And then a nationwide pool of semifinalists, like I said, does represent less than 1% of US high school seniors. So congratulations to all of our students, that makes us very proud. The United States Department of Education cites career training and work experiences as evidence-based practices for employability success, and Manner Schools recently celebrated the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Alliance for Working Together Transformation Training Center, and I know Mrs. Jessling and Mr. Tuttle were able to attend that. And this facility will provide unique opportunities for Manner School students in manufacturing. The AWT Building is an excellent example of community collaboration to benefit our students and the economic development of Manner. These, we, Manner School students specifically have slots available to them in, you know, that aren't available to other students. So that's just a wonderful opportunity that Manner Schools provides. Another excellent opportunity for students to learn job skills is our Cardinal Works Program. Cardinal Works has been growing hydroponic lettuce, and it was recently harvested and served at the Manner High School cafeteria staff, served it on a salad bar, which I thought was just a wonderful work experience and a way to bring some fresh options to, to the lunches, so thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, we have Chief Financial Officer's Report and Recommendations, Mr. Wade.
Madam President, Members of the Board, looking back at the month-end financials for September, we're projecting to be better off by about $1.7 million than we were projecting when we did the forecast in June based on our first quarter of the year, which is good news, which is reducing the amount of the deficit spend that we have. And just as a reminder, we will be updating the November forecast at the November meeting and discussing that at a work session again preliminary prior to approval in October to have discussions on how best to proceed moving forward. With that, this is the time of year when a lot of things come down to timing, and when you're comparing when we receive our revenues or our expenses, so it's, it's a little bit different. So when we look at our month revenue collections compared to the prior year, our revenue for the month was down about $88,000, and again, when you're looking at a $106 million budget, that's not really that significant. And when we look at the same timeframe compared to last year, we're up about $2 million, and that came down to the fact that we received our tip payment this month, which we didn't have last year. So it's basically a timing issue, looks like we've received additional revenue, but we're trending pretty closely. We're only, to the better, we're about $421,000 more than we expected based in June, which is about a 0.39% difference, which again, is not very significant, with the majority with the majority of that coming from, again, I've said this each month, but I'll continue to say just as a reminder, about half of that coming from the advance-in that we had when we closed out the fiscal year from prior year because of the federal funding. So again, we're trending in the right direction, which is all positive. When we look at our expenses for the year, when we look at September of this year comparison to last year, our actually a month expenses are down $5.6 million. But that was because last year at this time, we had made our large transfer to our O-70, our capital improvement fund, where we did that back in July. So it's just, again, a timing issue. So when you scroll down to year-to-date, our expenses are about $9.7 million higher to this point. And again, goes back to our transfer that we made to our O-70 or capital improvement fund for not only for this year, but for the out-years that we had, so that we had a cash balance that shows exactly what we are within our cash balance. I think it's important to note that our salaries and benefits are up about $2.1 million. 1.7 or almost 1.8 of that is because of the fact that last year, if you remember, in July and August, we had partial premium holidays for our staff based on the reserve amount that we had currently in our healthcare fund, which is outside the general fund. So we did not charge the employees of the districts for those. So the, you know, the benefits actually appear to be higher, but they're not. It's just we had actual expenses this year for the first two months of the fiscal year. Again, everything else is trending as we would have expected it to. So overall, we're looking at a positive sense. We're down-spending about $1.2 million. Most of that coming from salaries being lower than we projected back in June, which is kind of apropos to the decision the board just approved with regards to the severance. Because when we have people retire, we always hire people who come in for a lower rate. So we always have a savings that bundled in. So to point out to the board, the severance plan savings that I suggested, or suggested share that could occur would be on top of the traditional savings that we'd have from an actual retirement. So those will be on top of that. But we did not expect to have the level of savings from the retirements this year that we saw. We saw almost a million dollars in savings from the salaries that we had for people who retired and the new people coming in. Also with the fact that we were down about four staff members comparison to last year, based on that. So with that, we're trending at about $1.2 million better than we expected, mostly because of salaries. I do want to point out something that I forgot to mention earlier with regards to this $267,000 in state revenue. Most of that comes from, we are receiving more aid in what's received, considered to be restricted aid from the state. So that means that we have to spend it in specific areas. The interesting thing that I wanted to point out to the board and the community, our unrestricted aid, which is our typical state aid, is actually down. And it's down because of the fact of two things. The valuation last year, if we remember, we all had our, we had our reappraisal year in the county and, or update, excuse me. And with that, we saw about, you know, an 18% increase across the county, a little bit less here in Menter. So the valuations of the homes went up, and our enrollment coincidentally dropped at the same time. So with that, with the way that the state determines the capacity of the local district, because our enrollment decreased and our valuations went up, we actually have more of a burden on us as a local district and are receiving less state funding by about $300 per student than we received last year. Luckily for us, the restricted aid makes up for that, and we're seeing more than that, but we're actually seeing a little bit less than we projected. So just wanted to point that out, something that happens with the new funding formula. It's kind of based on enrollment as well as the capacity of the district, which goes back to the, the average valuation of the district as well as the median income. So I thought it important to point that out. And I would just like to bring to the attention of the board that we have the resolution on to grant me authority to put down a deposit, if you will, on a purchase of a new home for the district. It's not that we're buying a home for us to live in. It would be for our construction and management students in our career tech program. We're looking for a new home after we sold last year's home to move forward. So we're in the midst of doing that, and because the market's still relatively hot, we don't want to not have the ability to assure the buyer that the board has, I have the support of the board to make that purchase. And I would say that would be a cash purchase out of the fund that we have for career tech because they made a little bit of money on the last purchase. So that would actually be no cost potentially to the district. And again, they might, they rehab that home and sell it ideally for at least what we put into it, if not a little bit more. So that's what that resolution is for on the agenda tonight. So I want to bring that to your attention. And I think we're still going to make opening pitch in five minutes. I should say, first pitch. Madam President, members of the board, I ask that we approve items B through G and the addendums that may be acted on in one motion.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Motion's carry five zero.
Just a couple of things with unfinished business that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. Obviously, we've got a work session scheduled for Thursday as well, just to continue our conversations. Again, our agenda is going to be kind of revolving around board policies. So not only looking at board policy as a whole, but also looking at public participation and our survey policy, just to make sure that we tie up those loose ends. We'll be looking at student handbooks in particular, just kind of revisiting the dress code piece. I know there were some questions at the beginning of the year about that. Want to make sure that we get that tied up. We'll talk school safety since we did submit a grant. Want to just talk to the board a little bit about that. And then if time permits, we'll jump into the DEI conversations a little bit as well. We've had some internal conversations with our internal group, really digging into the data. And I want to share at least some of the general overview data that has been presented to me thus far and kind of give you some next steps as to what we might do with that internal group moving forward.
Good, thank you. Any other unfinished business? No? Any new business? Nope. Next, we have hearing of the public on any items.
Excuse me, sir. The microphones are in the back. No, no, over there.
Right over there where the guys wave it.
Down, yep, there you go. Sorry about that, guys. Just wanted to make a little joke to start the day. All right, guys. My name is Jake Bowling. I represent the organization Turning Point USA in our brand-new high school department here all across the United States of America. It's pretty awesome. Our goal is to make an impact on students' lives and to help them find their voice. We're a 501(c)(3) organization, so we don't endorse or support political parties or political candidates, contrary to the popular belief. We like to focus on ideas, constitutional ideas, that bring people together and that we can all agree on. Examples, free markets, limited government intervention, educational choice, and lower taxes. These views make for, make us a great first step for students to get involved in the political world and to network with other like-minded students and to be able to speak with students that disagree with them and to teach them how to properly discuss things that we disagree on, which is very important in today's society as well. For a better scope of our reach, we, we're on over 2,500 college campuses and we're on over 300 high school campuses and growing. That started in July of 2022, so we are growing very fast even in the high school reigns. Students that choose to join a chapter in our areas or in an area, they don't regret it. They have so many opportunities to, to be a part of awesome conferences and awesome political or local events that they, they have. In terms of things that go on in schools, Turning Point USA, excuse me, there we go. In terms of education, all students deserve to feel supported and heard. And when students and parents are telling me that they don't feel comfortable expressing their pro-American feelings and opinions and the back, back the blue beliefs, that's a big problem. So-called safe spaces should not be for just a small minority group of citizens and group of students. It should be for everybody. And when parents come home and when parents have spoken about finding explicit or sexual content in books sent home to their students from teachers without being vetted by the district itself, that's a problem. So I do hope that, that Menter does that and keeps students safe in those regards. Lastly, to conclude, we believe that the Constitution is the greatest political document in US, in the, in world history. And we believe that America is the greatest country in world history. Madam President, I do have one really quick question for you, or two, I'm sorry. Do you know off the top of your head, is there an American flag in every classroom? And is the Pledge of Allegiance expressed every single day during the school year, or during this week? And that is it for me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christine. My kids go to Hopkins, and I have a student at the high school and a graduate. I live at 7106 Brandywine Drive. Classroom sizes across the district are still something that we need to continue to address, not monitor, but proactively do something about. Ohio Administrative Code 3301.32.05 states there should be at least one full-time teacher for every 25 students. The key word in that sentence is "at least." The number of teachers in a classroom should not only be dependent on the student-teacher ratio, but should also be dependent upon the makeup of the students in the classroom and their particular behavioral, emotional, or learning needs. This administrative code is also something that should be included in the teacher's contract, but is not even considered at this time. We are bringing the concern of classroom sizes up as volunteers and as parents, not to annoy you, but because we truly care. We know that we can do better for our teachers and students. We believe in this district, and that by addressing this issue and holding everyone accountable, we can help facilitate the change that is needed. And another area that I would like to address tonight that needs our attention is our third through fifth grade or our fourth through fifth grade. Students having the ability to switch classrooms for different subjects like the students used to in years past. There are so many benefits to our students switching classrooms in elementary school. A few of them are, less time is spent on lesson planning, freeing up more time for developing new lesson activities for students. With less time spent on lesson planning, it makes teacher-life balance a lot easier. Teachers can work together to create cross-curricular lessons that help meet standards for different subjects. Students benefit when a teacher gets to focus on the subject they're passionate about, or that is their strength. Switching classes is a good baby step to help students get from self-contained elementary classes to middle school. It allows students to release energy and refocus as they enter new classrooms, and it's a great brain break. Switching classrooms leads to better performance across the board. We need to open up this conversation as a district, actively listen to what our teachers have to say about this topic, and figure out how to implement this back until the elementary school's going forward. Our district slogan is "Adapting, Balancing, and Collaborating." We need to be able to adapt our curriculum or grade-level learning styles to meet the current needs of our students, balance the students-to-teacher ratio in the classroom, and start creating a culture of collaborating with families that can grow and evolve with the needs of students, parents, and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynda O'Brien, 5842, Tanajer Court, Menter. Recently, my grandchildren were relocated to Texas, and I called the middle school and asked if I could meet with some leadership regarding their curriculum and culture. I was amazed at the fact that the principal and the assistant principal gave me an hour of their day to talk about that school. I will summarize that hour for you with the highlights. Number one, they do not teach Common Core math. They teach traditional math. Number two, they do not teach CRT or SEL. They teach students to have self-respect and to be respectful to others regardless of their differences. It's not about differences, it's about uniting. Number three, they teach, they don't teach sexual education in the manner that we do, certainly not down in the lower grades. And if a student were to come forward and indicate that they preferred, let's say, a different pronoun, the first thing that they do is call the parents. And they get the parents involved. And then if it's decided to go forward in that manner, that student respectfully will be using the nurse's bathroom. The girls' bathroom is only for girls. The boys' bathroom is only for boys. And sports remain girls' and boys', as do other organizations such as choirs, et cetera. It's not this gender alteration that Menter's going through. Now, I share this to give hope and encouragement to people who are like-minded with me, who think that Menter is on the wrong path. Because the fact is, from our governor on down to the school board, these are elected people that can be voted out. One voted at time across this city, across this nation, across this state, we can make change. Whether it was George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, DeTocqueville, Ronald Reagan, or others, it has been stated over and over, and the fact is true. For America to thrive as a free country, we must have morals and faith. Both of those things appear to be missing in the foundation of Menter's curriculum and core of how they speak to our children. Let's get back to some basics, reading, writing, arithmetic, et cetera. Let's provide patriotic enthusiasm about this exceptional country that we live in. And let's turn this ship around and get this going in the right direction so that we maintain the freedom for our students in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Lindsay Shatkov, Lindsay Wall. I don't know where that came from, maiden name. I have my two kids, so I'm a little distracted, sorry. 7250 Beachwood Drive. I wanted to address the busing issue that we're currently having. Obviously, after getting some emails over the last couple of weeks, we see the signs out in front of the schools. I know we are in desperate need of bus drivers currently. I, I'm not going to, you know, say anything negative. I want to thank our transportation department because I know, they know they're thankful. Their bus drivers have been busting their butts to get our kids to and from school safely in some type of timely fashion. With the lack of bus drivers and having to cram double buses onto one bus, I know their, their ride the other day, it did, it was almost an hour after school was out, which was not fun for them. But I'm also positive it's not fun for the bus drivers either. So what I'm wondering is if we can, as a community, try to brainstorm together and help everyone out. I don't think right now, I, I wish that I could help out with, with the whole bus driver situation. No one wants me to drive a bus, I promise you that. So getting a CDL would, would be a waste. But I think that we do have a tremendous community and a lot of parents, even people that might not be parents, who might be willing to help out right now until we can fill that, that void with the bus drivers. I know I would be willing, if, if driving them to school or picking them up from school would be helpful. I know the other morning I did call Transportation and I asked what would be helpful here. And they did say, you know, picking him up would, would be helpful to lessen the load on the actual bus going home. And I know it helped them because they didn't have to sit on the bus for an hour. I had the ability to do that. I know some parents don't. But I think if we, as a community, kind of brainstormed some ideas together or just talked to our neighbors to see what they needed and kind of worked together through this difficult time. But thank you, Transportation Department, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Real quick before we move on, I know we normally don't address this, but since you brought that up, I did send an email out last Friday. We had, you know, a pretty intense bus shortage on Friday. And I sent out an email, and when, one of the lines in there, we just asked if you or anybody that you know is interested in driving a bus for us, we are in desperate need of substitute bus drivers. That email actually prompted three people to reach out, and we actually interviewed three potential substitute bus drivers on Monday, yeah, just yesterday. So before everybody here and our audience on TV as well, if you are interested and have a CDL license and would like to drive for us, please reach out to our Transportation Department. And it's a dire need across the state right now, and we're really trying to piece things together. Our bus drivers and our transportation coordinator have been phenomenal, and our teachers, especially at the elementary level, and helping additional supervision at the end of the day when we've been having some of these challenges from a transportation standpoint have just been unbelievable. So any additional help that we could get would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Hello, my name is, hello, Board. My name is Anna Perick, 8651, Mennar Road. I wanted to know if any other counseling agencies were vetted, like Catholic Charities? Is, real quick, are you able to answer that? Were any other counseling agencies vetted? Or was it just, you know, awarded to Crossroads?
We've just been using Crossroads the last few years. I'm still in month two here, so I don't know the answer to that, but that's something that I can look into.
Okay, I have a construction background. Normally, when you contract someone, you take three quotes and you qualify the contractor. I'm disappointed that didn't occur in this particular situation. Many women, many young girls suffer from post-abortive abortion issues. Do you know if Crossroads provides counseling for women in that situation? Off the top of your head, really quick? No, you do not know? Okay. I would suggest that you look into an agency such as Bethesda House of Mercy, based on the west side of Cleveland, to provide that sort of care for young girls that may have gone through an abortion and are dealing with the stress, emotional grief that sometimes women feel or have. Very disappointed in what happened at North, taking the opportunity away from a girl to be homecoming queen. It was awarded, we still don't know how exactly, to a transgender, to a male. We mentioned God in the Pledge of Allegiance. In Genesis, it talks about the creation of man and woman. And God said, "Let us make man in our image and our likeness, and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the fowl of the air and over the cattle and over all the earth and every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth." So God created man in his own image. In the image of God, created he him. Male and female created he them. Thank you.
Time, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Mike Williams, 6064, Walden Court, Mentor. The gentleman from Turning Point asked two questions, and I just wondered if the board could answer those. One was, are there American flags in the classrooms in our schools? And do our students say the Pledge of Allegiance every day? Could somebody please answer that?
I'll look into it and get back to everyone.
You don't know that? You don't know that?
I've asked my daughter. She says the Pledge of Allegiance every day. My two, that's a small sample, but...
And they're in the Mennar Schools?
My two children are in Mennar Schools. I have an 11th grader and an 8th grader.
Okay.
And they have told me that they say the pledge every day. But I only know that.
Mr. Heath, I would appreciate an answer to that question, to those two questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Because I want to make sure, again, it's across the entire district as well, because I believe that was the question, is it in every single classroom? So we'll get some information on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just as a side note, Mr. Heath, I believe we have a policy in regards to that, too. It's not pulling up for me when I search. It's not working for me, but maybe we can look into the policy, too.
We'll try and get an answer for Thursday's boardwork session.
Perfect. Thanks.
Brandon Towns, Marion Parkway, two kids, one at both, at Orchard Hollow. First, I want to say thank you. Have we not heard enough of this? Last month, I lifted the white lodge that we have become accustomed to, and I want to move to the white flight that we saw all around the time of Brown. And I feel like we have to be willing to suffer that loss again. White flight, white families left, urban environments versus suburbia. Now, we have to be willing to suffer the loss of white nationalist Christians, even if that means they leave our schools. Because we have to make the statement that hatred and bigotry are not accepted here. So with that being said, I ask the board to continue to be vigilant, to do what we can to put an end to the nagging complaints that are incessant and ignorant, be that by enforcing the policies that we currently have or creating policies to do such that. When folks exceed their time, can we cut off the mic? When people don't follow rules as they're set, and we have law enforcement here, respectfully, can we ask them to escort them out? Jesus flipped a table or two. We can do the same metaphorically, and I ask that we do. I promise you, we have your back. We're not going to let them vote you out. They are a vocal minority, and we will show that, and we have shown that. And that's why, continue to not get what they want. And that's why we see the white lodge, and we have to be willing to accept the white flight that is ensuing. And the last thing I'll say, as the peanut gallery continues to talk while I'm talking, is that in 1954, Brower's Board of Education, there are many that stood on the wrong side. They perpetuated and protected racism and bigotry. And I know that you won't do that, but I know that there are many who may, and they think that their faith compels them. But I assure you, it doesn't, because if there is a God, she would not stand with you. And if she had a son named Jesus, it would be your self-righteousness that crucified him, not anything else.
Thank you.
Leah McCullough, 4680, Homewood Drive. That was racist. Like, clean and simple. Who else has come up here and said anything racist like that or even remotely close to it? Nobody. For the last year and a half that I've been coming, nothing has come out of anybody's mouth on our side like that. I want to know about this DEI contract, the extra seat at the table. Who approved $29,700 for a DEI assessment or course or contract for our school? Craig Heath, you've been here for, what, two, three meetings? And every time you've had to address the board or the audience, you hung your head and spoke softly. You had to cover up for Hammond. Who, and now you want to put your name on the top of this contract? Who approved the $29,700?
It has not been approved.
Who brought this up? Why is this now just being brought out and we get to see a contract of it? Do we have any other information? Because you guys are going to have the special meeting, not for the public to speak upon about any of this. And you're going to approve it when? That night? I'm waiting.
No, that contract will not be voted upon that evening.
So when will it be voted on?
Depends on what the conversation with our board is during our work session.
Who is all on this advisory board for this DIE? Who would be on there? Yeah, Brandon Towns, the guy that just came up here and called us all racist. That's who, that's who you want to represent that board? That's who you want on your side? Shame on you. You better rethink that contract.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to say something. I just want to say that I wholeheartedly disagree with any statements based on anybody's race making statements about people's race or their religion, their religious beliefs. And I also wholeheartedly disagree with stating that anybody shouldn't be welcome at our schools, whether that's transgendered, people who hold sincerely held religious beliefs. Everybody should have, should feel safe and comfortable in our schools. I don't think that we should ever condone people not being fit for our schools because they are public schools. I just wanted to make that clear.
Does anyone here disagree with that? I don't think anyone disagrees.
No, not at all.
I think we're all in agreement with that statement.
You want to say something! You want to say something that way!
Excuse me? Anyone that would like to speak can go to the microphone.
Oh, can I have a second chance?
Uh, no.
Okay, so we can't either?
That's correct. One speaker, thank you.
No, I don't mind watching.
All right. We will take a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned at 8:00 PM.